It's already recording and they'll edit it to when we start.
Dan, what's the deal with this forecast? We need to do something about it.
If I could control the weather, I wouldn't be having to go out and do broadcasts in 90-degree heat.
Has everybody got their microphones on? All right, there's one camera tonight. They're going to edit it so it starts when we start. And just be sure when we're done, we turn off the microphone. So, all right. Good evening and welcome to the Fairmont Area School Board meeting. For roll call, we have all members present. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you have your minutes in front of you from the last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the June 10th, '25 meeting.
Thank you. You have a motion by Jen, second by Mari to approve the minutes as presented from the June 10th, 2025 school board meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Have an agenda in front of you. There is a green one, so it's been amended since it went out.
Is it long enough? I don't know. Could be adding more. If there's nothing to add, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mike to approve it as long as we don't add anything. And we have Jen. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We don't have any celebrations. Our school community reports tonight, so we'll move on to our superintendent's report and calendar.
Well, due to the fact that we're in the summer months, we do not have an enrollment update. That'll come again in October after we get our first official draw on the state reporting system. But with that, this week, we have had a lot of young learners in the building over the last couple weeks with some early preschool things and our kindergarten, our kinder prep program as well. So it's been great to have kids in the building for partial days, along with our students engaging in their summer learning. A lot of buildings and grounds updates. Tyler and his crew continue to do a fantastic job navigating projects. At this building, one that I didn't list, on the west end of the building, doors 16 and 17 did get replaced and updated with new glass and door systems. That's part of an ongoing project for years to come. There's new flooring in a couple hallways at the junior senior high school, right upon entry in the second floor above that. That looks really nice and will be a great update there. A lot of painting going on. Dishwashers installed at the elementary school, freezers updated. Unfortunately, that was a repair needed. All of our bleachers, their annual check and inspection has been done. The elementary elevator did go out of order for a while on the west side of the building and has been, or repair pieces have been ordered at not a cheap cost. And that'll relate to a decision you, the six of you, will be making here shortly in the board meeting as well. Additional planning continues to go on. And again, our maintenance and buildings and grounds crews and custodial staff are doing a great job of keeping things going. Another thing I just want to highlight, over the summer months, our district's administrative team has engaged in extensive work with the Minnesota multi-tiered systems of support, which ultimately puts pieces in place to make sure we're best supporting our staff and students throughout the school year. We've been, a lot of our work's been facilitated by a member of the Department of Education's compass group and the South Central Service Cooperative. So that's been really great learning and work that our principal team has really engaged with as well. And I've been able to take part in some of that. Additionally, they've done a lot of work on re-envisioning our teacher observation and support model. We just had a multi-hour meeting on that this afternoon to provide updates and make sure we're aligned with our Q-Comp plan. It's truly been impressive to watch our principal team as they collaborate with each other, challenge each other's thinking, and ultimately work to best support our students and teachers. One note I didn't put in my report, a week and a half ago, we also had a group of superintendents from across the state visit Fairmont as part of a learning experience. We visited business, enjoyed some collaborative learning time. They got to tour our lakes by boat. And their feedback from the largest district in the state to districts our size was overwhelmingly positive about our community, our schools, the shape our facilities are in. Two of the superintendents were even their former career and technical education teachers. And when they saw some of our shop spaces, they commented that we have the nicest, may have the nicest CTE facilities in the state. So that's definitely a lot to be proud of. And the investment that you've made as a board in those programs doesn't go unnoticed when others do visit. So a lot of great feedback there. The next thing I have is our next board meeting will be August 12th. Back to our twice-a-month schedule, beginning there, that evening, right here in the budroom.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Tradow? All right, then we will move on to financial business. Donations, Appendix A.
Yes, we have a very long list of donations to be thankful for here today. As listed in Appendix A, a move for the Fairmont Area School Board of Education to gratefully accept the following donations or grants as identified. From Lisa DeBoer, $470 for junior class 2025 prom. From Bank Midwest, $250 for summer food transportation. From the American Legion, $1,000 for band transportation. Linda Ullman, $25 for Anne Frank Tree Project, CHS Incorporated. $1,000 for the robotics team. Cardinal Boosters, $850 for golf balls. Miscellaneous donors, $246 for United Cardinals Mini Marathon. Megan Schwab, $50. Nick Davis, $20, also for unlimited Cardinals million-millimeter mini marathon. Lawn Solutions, $1,000 to the Fairmont Forensics Team for debate and speech. Fairmont Kiwanis, $250. American Legion, $500 for debate and speech. Louise Osley, $20. James and Rachel Spencer, $20. Joseph and Cheryl Loffmiller, $50. Linda Medei, $20. Pizza Ranch, $443. Jane Gustafson, $20. National Speech and Debate Association, $500. And Fairmont Booster Club, $1,550. Those were all for the debate team, and I believe it was all for the transportation and lodging to the Nationals, the two different national events that they went to. 3M donated $2,845 to the Elementary Cardinal Collaboratory. Grace Lutheran Church, $1,750 for adult basic education. City of Fairmont, $5,500 for playground program. And Blizzard Snowmobile Club, $100 to Fairmont CER. That is the longest list of donations that we've had at once in my whole time on the board here. So with great thanks, I move that we approve all those donations.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Dan and a second by Mike. Any discussion? All right, then we'll move to a roll call vote. Jen?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mike?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Sheena?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. And a huge thank you to all the individuals and organizations that continue to be so very generous to our schools and its programs and students. All right, we have our financial business. Reports and bills. Jessica?
Yes, you have quite a stack of papers with the bills in front of you. The reason with that is each bill run, we have to do a separate batch for fiscal year '25 expenses and a separate one for fiscal year '26. And then we've had bills from June 24th, July 8th, and then tonight's July 22nd bill run. And then some June 2025 single checks. Just point out Fairmont Glass and Sign Products, there's a check of $50,264. That's with some of our LTFM projects that are going on to replace some doors here. And then, as Andy had talked about, a dishwasher in the amount of $77,584 to Cullen X. So it's amazing how expensive the dishwashers are. Yes. Another great use of our food service fund. Do you have any questions on any of the other?
So I just want to be clear, the money for the dishwasher comes from our food service fund, which we cannot use for anything else except our food service. And we have been told by the state that we have to spend money in that fund or we will be in trouble. So, okay.
Yeah, we can only, we can only maintain a balance of, right now, it's six months of expenses on average in there. And we're over that with COVID money and whatnot. So we have been definitely trying to find ways to spend that down to get it to where the state wants us to be.
And a broken dishwasher is a good way to spend it.
Yes.
And it shouldn't break for a very long time.
It better not for seven years.
Okay.
Awesome. Well, I will make a motion to approve the wire transfers from 6/5/2025 to 7/16/25, the June 24th, '25, the July 8th, 2025, and the July 22nd, 2025 bills, and the June 25th single checks.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion by Jen and a second by Mari to approve the wire transfers and bills as stated and in your board packet. Any further discussion, questions, clarifications? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. Now we'll move on to new business, as we have no old business to discuss. The first item of new business is our organizational item list, which we must do every new fiscal year, which is this July. And I will make a motion to approve the following items, and I'm going to list them. Hopefully, my voice will carry me through to the end of this list. The first is designate the second and fourth Tuesday of each month as regularly scheduled school board meetings to be held at 5:15 in the budroom at Fairmont Elementary. The second, designate the following banks and depositories of school funds and authorize Superintendent Andy Tradow and Director of Finance and Business Management Jessica Court to sign release agreements for pledge securities for collateral purposes, initiate and approve electronic fund transfers, and authorize signers on the accounts as the depositories below US Bank Fairmont, Baphinium Fairmont, First Farmers, a Merchant, American Institutional Bank Fairmont, Bank Midwest Fairmont, Portage Community Bank, Ceylon CCF Bank Fairmont, Sweet Financial Partners LLC, Bremer Bank, US Bank Minneapolis State Bank Fairmont, Baylor's Investment, and Schwab. Number three, set the compensation for school board members at $2,403,000. For the school board president, compensation for each additional meeting pertaining to school board matters is set at $75 for partial day and $150 for full day. Number four, designate the Fairmont Sentinel as an official newspaper for Independent School District 2752. Five, designate Matt Mahoney as Title IX Compliance Officer, Human Rights Officer for our district. Number six, designate Jessica Court as District Transportation Safety Director. Seven, designate Kim Niss as 504 Coordinator. Eight, designate Brooke Schultz as Federal Programs Administrator and provide, as provided under Public Law 107-110. Designate Andy Tradow as Homeschool Coordinator. Number 10, designate Andy Tradow as the MDE-identified official with authority to authorize user access to MDE-secure websites. Number 11, designate April Torson as a homeless student liaison. Number 12, designate Jessica Court as the HIPAA Compliance Officer. 13, designate Tyler Garrison as the Health and Safety Coordinator. Set 14, set the substitute teacher pay at $165 to $200 a day per incentive pay schedule as seen in Appendix B. Number 15, set the stipend for interpreters at $30 an hour as seen in Appendix C. 16, set the stipend for test proctoring at $20 per hour. 17, set the stipend for tutoring at $35 per hour. 18, set the student and summer help rate at $15 per hour. 19, set the stipend for peer tutoring at $13 per hour. 20, set the crossing guard pay at $15 per hour. 21, authorize payment of bills between board meetings for the purpose of obtaining a discount or required payment, prepayment on an order or to avoid penalty charges. The district is also authorized to pay board bills in the event a board meeting is not held. The superintendent and business manager are authorized to approve the processing of payments for invoices submitted under contracts approved by the board and under circumstances when it is deemed necessary and appropriate to proceed with a payment. Thank you, Mike.
I didn't catch that. Could you repeat some of that?
That's the discussion? Any discussion? All right, we will vote then. All those in favor of the aforementioned?
Sorry, I'm super excited. Just aye.
Jen makes a motion. Any second. Oh, I already did that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That was so long, I lost my place. All right. We're moving on to Minnesota School Board Association.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the MSBA resources for the '25-'26 school year MSBA membership at a fee of $6,599 and MSBA Policy Services at a fee of $760.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Jen, second by Dan. Any discussion?
Do we get value for that $760 on the policy services?
Yeah, I would, I would say yes, we do, because they keep us up to date and in compliance. There are some policies that we, and we look at.
Some changes are minimal.
Yeah.
While they're, I think, as I joke about it, I will say that usually every July 1st, sometimes January 1st, there are significant changes in the law based on what the legislature passes. And it would be a lot cheaper to rely on them to update that than to be relying on legal counsel to bird-dogging and telling us. So I think at the end of the day, while a lot of it is, I roll my eyes at, it is very valuable for those changes that take effect in Jan. 1 and July 1 that impact us. So I joke about it, but it's a very, it's a very valuable service.
Yes, I would agree. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. We have a memorandum of understanding with the Counseling Services of Southern Minnesota.
We are renewing our current agreement with Counseling Services of Southern Minnesota for the 2025-'26 school year. This agreement allows the CSMM staff to work collaboratively with district staff to provide mental health services to students. I will introduce that motion to approve that agreement.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Was it just a year-to-year deal?
Yeah, it's been an ongoing partnership for several years, and over that time, they have actually expanded their services. When we started, we had a singular provider with a caseload that had a maximum, and we consistently had a waiting list. So over time, CSSM has worked with us to expand their services, which has been really good. So we review it annually, basically just to renew that agreement. Fiscally, we do not have a direct responsibility to them. They provide the service, we provide the space. And then, yeah, then they serve our kids. They always also receive the correct paperwork and documentation from parents of our students as well before providing services, so.
How long have we been working with them?
It's been, well, this is going into my fifth year in this role. So it's been at least seven years that I'm aware of that we've been working with this. And it may be longer, but at least that long.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. All right, moving on to audit services. Jessica, do you have anything you want to share?
I make a motion, make a motion that we approve entering an agreement with I. Bailey to complete the district's 2025-'26 audit. Estimated fee of $37,200 and $1,860 technology fee plus a single audit fee starting at $5,900.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Mike, second by Sheena. Any discussion?
That is so much money, but also that's how much audits cost.
Yeah.
It's a very under, I just, I, I think my only concern with I. Bailey is that I thought they got a little lazy on some of their slides the previous year, but I think they corrected that most recent year. And so I'll take the opportunity to say, for that kind of money, we should get non-regurgitated and accurate slides. But substantively, they're a very, very highly reputable audit company, and so it's kind of a no-brainer. My question, when's the last time we went to bid for audit services?
Probably over eight years ago.
We should probably think about doing that every so often. There are competitors that have equal repute, but.
There are ebbs and flows in that business, I've noticed, and it kind of depends on sometimes, some really good people will move from one company to another. So I mean, it's worth looking at every now and then. I think that's the reason we moved to I. Bailey from our previous provider the last time we did this. So, yeah, that's a good idea.
We did have another vendor reach out to us last September, but we wanted to finalize, you know, as our funds finalize that with I. Bailey and then go out and see if there's anybody interested in taking on.
So next year, maybe we look at that.
Yeah, one of the things Jessica and I have talked about as a note of caution is, in today's marketplace with, with this business, is when you've been with a company for long enough, you have a solidified place on their list to complete the audit. And as any company right sizes their services they provide, sometimes if you're a newer client, you could potentially be at risk of, in future years, not receiving that service and having to go out to bid again. As there have been area schools that certain audit companies have dropped in recent past years.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to item E, Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Plan Approval.
This is Appendix?
I'm sorry, it's number E, Appendix F.
Appendix F, right.
Yep. Item E on your paper.
E, E on the agenda, Appendix F.
Right.
I'll make a mo, well, this is a, is this a resolution? So I'll make a motion for a resolution for the Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Plan Approval and General Obligation Facilities Maintenance Bonds Series 2025 ACE, stating the official intent to proceed with and authorizing new issuance and sale thereof and providing for credit enhancement with respect thereto, which is on your Appendix F. Issuer of the bond would be the Fairmont School District 2752. Governing body would be us, the school board. The resolution would be relating to what I just stated, and that would need to be signed by the school district clerk. So the backside of that, you will see, if you can read that with better eyes than me, the Long-Term Facilities Tenure Expenditure Plan, we talk about this all the time, but we need to do this resolution. So I'd make that motion, it'll be adopted.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mike and a second by Jen to adopt the resolution. Any discussion?
Just want to note that there would be a new polling place for this particular election. Is if you look in page three of Appendix F2.
We're on F. You're one resolution ahead of me.
But I'm really excited. I want to, I want to, I want to get this.
This is the LTFM one.
Oh.
So any other discussion about item E, Appendix F? Okay. As there is no more discussion, then we'll have our roll call vote. Jen?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mike?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Sheena?
Aye.
Thank you. The resolution carries. Now, item F?
F2, the one Dan's been waiting for.
Resolution, or Appendix F2.
All right, a resolution related to determining the necessity of issuing general obligation bonds and calling for a special election thereon. I make a motion to adopt the certification amendments related to the special election in Appendix F2.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion for, yeah, approving the resolution. And a second, is there a discussion?
Yes, so it's not a special election, because it's happening on the general election date. So I don't want to like mix different terminologies, but it is a special election for the issuance of the bond, but it is not happening at a special election. It's happening at the general election, correct?
It's special in the way that ordinarily, it's special in that we would not ordinarily have an election in this odd-numbered year on Election Day, but yes, it is the typical Election Day in November.
So it's a special election, but it's not a literal special election, because we'd have to pay for it.
Well, we still have to pay for our election. Now, if it's, if there's other municipalities, there are precincts that are running an election on that same time, then the county auditor treasurer would handle it, because at this time, we don't know. We believe that we would run everything, and those will be the polling places.
Right. And so the polling places, Dan, you want to highlight that to remind folks?
The polling place listed for Fairmont is the Fairmont Armory at 700 Fair Lakes Avenue on the west side of town, where all the road construction is now. Hopefully, it'll be done by then. And then a Legion post in Ceylon would be the second location to hold the election that day.
And then absentee ballot, absentee voting is the same as any other election, starting on September 19th.
And so I don't, the contents of the resolution, we've already read, but I'm just going to highlight that this is, we're seeking approval of school issuing bonds to, in amount not to exceed 27,007,000 for the acquisition of betterment of school sites, facilities, including but not limited to finance learning center addition, secure entry and office addition at the Fairmont High School, renovations to the locker rooms, interior, exterior updates to buildings, capital maintenance projects district-wide. So that is a question to this resolution, to seek and put on the ballot at our special election, at the next general election on November 4th, 2025. Just so everybody's clear, this is a necessary approval process in the, I'd say, 18-month-long steps that we've been taking along this due diligence. And so we have to prove this in order for it to become a thing for folks to be able to vote on.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, we will do a roll call vote. Jen?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mike?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Sheena?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion for the resolution carries. All right, now moving on to?
Here's an exciting one. Let me take this one, because I put it on the table to.
You did.
Technically means it's old business, not new business.
That's true.
So we'll pretend I didn't say that. So if you recall, I'll preface my motion with some commentary. There was an, I don't know, say an error, but there was some missing documents in the spec of Southern Plains Educational Cooperative, which we remember, for their Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan. And so we have to approve that as one of the member schools, and I didn't feel that, because I hadn't been at their previous meeting, so I could explain it, and it, we didn't have a piece of paper or two that would have explained it. It may best practice to bring it to today. We're still timely for it, but we do need to approve this today. And I assured the Ms. Middlestead that we would do so. So I would make a motion that we would approve the Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Plan Resolution for the Southern Plains Educational Cooperative located in Appendix G of your packet.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? As there is none, we'll go for a vote. All those in favor?
Roll call.
I'm sorry, it is a resolution. Another roll call vote. Jen?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mike?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Sheena?
Aye.
All right, all the, the motion carries. All have said that it's good, yes. Okay, moving on to Appendix H, which is also item number H on your agenda, the Food Service Contract.
I'm number four, making a motion that the Operations Committee recommends renewing the joint agreements we have with St. John Beanie, St. Paul's Lutheran School, Southern Plains Educational Cooperative, and entering into a vended meal contract with Head Start for the physical, right, I did say that, '26, the appendices H through J2. Right?
Yeah, I'll second. Thank you. We have a motion by Sheena, a second by Jen. Any discussion?
Each of those appendixes are the individual contract with each school, but they're identical other than the school that they're specific to.
Correct, for the first three.
Yeah. Head Start's a little different.
Head Start's a new one.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item I, Authority to Make Electronic Fund Transfers Resolution.
All right, so I will make a motion to approve this resolution, which gives the board authority to make electronic fund transfers to the Director of Finance and the Business Management Superintendent. This resolution provides the district depositories with formal approval of those individuals authorized to make electronic approval of those individuals authorized to make electronic funds on behalf of the district, as well as what items are authorized to be paid by electronic fund transfers.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion for the resolution by Jen, second by Mike. Any discussion?
Do we know a banking regulation requires this? I'm just kidding.
Which number? I don't know.
The bank is requiring us to have the document.
Right, we haven't had it in the past. I know I did it at the county, we had found it with our auditors. And so I'm adding this one here. So then I have a paper I can actually give to them. And so you've seen some changes.
Look at that, that's good. Appreciate that.
Any further discussion?
Let's talk more nerdy banking regulations.
Yeah.
Who doesn't love it?
That's good stuff.
And this is a resolution?
Yes.
So another roll call vote. Jen?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mike?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Shayna?
Aye.
Thank you. The resolution carries. And we'll move on to Title I Services, which is item J, Appendix, appendices L through O.
Yeah, so we have contracted with LSCM Lutheran Special Administries for our Title I Equitable Services to our, the non-public schools. This is, I believe, going into the third year, and this year is pretty streamlined with the contracts and working on that. So you'll have four contracts through St. John Beanie, St. Paul Lutheran, Fairmont Christian School, and St. James Lutheran. Costs of the contracts are paid with dollars from the non-public's equitable share of Title I funding, and the amount fluctuates from year to year and is adjusted throughout the year.
Can you give an example, Andy, of what some of these Title I things would be for people who don't know?
Reading supports, reading and math supports predominantly in those areas, most specifically reading. So if students are behind with updated statutes, if students are not at grade level each year, according to standardized assessments and progress monitoring, that these supports are provided for eligible districts, which Fairmont Area Schools is. And Jessica, one thing, like, because this is an approval of title, this is an approval of Title Funds. Title I is an area we are anticipating still receiving those funds.
Correct, but it hasn't been totally finalized. Yep. Title I is like the one that we're almost for sure getting those funds.
Which we typically get July 1, and we have not seen yet.
Correct.
Okay, so we're approving the agreement. These services will be provided by law that we do these partnerships. And if for some reason we don't receive the funding, we'd still have to pay for it anyway, or the equitable share. How would that work?
No, if we don't receive the funding, then we don't provide the equitable share to the schools.
Okay.
We're under no requirement that if we don't get Title I funds, that we still have to provide the equitable share. There's no.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
No free lunch.
So we have background information on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the Title I Services for St. John Beanie School, St. Paul Lutheran School, Fairmont Christian School, and St. James Lutheran School.
Thank you. We have a second, and a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to personnel. Room numeral 10, item A.
King Principal Schultz has recommended that Jill Monahan be hired as a high school long-term substitute effective August 25, 2025. Through, is that for the entire school year, next year then, through June 5, 2026? Principal Rosen has recommended that Kelsey Gary be hired as an elementary long-term substitute effective August 25, 2025 through June 5, 2026. Principal Rosen has also recommended that Samantha Kleese be hired as an elementary teacher effective August 25. And Principal Schultz has recommended that Ella Martin be hired as a high school long-term substitute effective August 25 through January 26 of 2026. Make a motion to approve all of those.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Dan, a second by Mari. Any discussion?
Why just the, this is the whole school year. Do we, without, obviously, there's some details we can't discuss, but why, why not, why, why for the full school year, do we know?
For the elementary, for the long-term subs.
Yeah.
Some, sometimes, so in general context, reasons that you would hire a long-term sub for the full year is you could potentially have a teacher or staff member on a leave of absence would be a reason. Another one would be if a teacher is filling a role potentially for which they are not licensed due to an out-of-field placement. And we've had the job posted for, I believe it's a minimum of 60 days. That is one of the criteria for those OFPs or out-of-field placements. So some, there are occasions where you may hire them as a long-term sub for the full year, because they would not have the appropriate licensure for a continuing contract teacher.
And, and at least at the high school in particular, could this, this is a utility person, where they, they could do multiple different roles for filling in multiple different people that are on leave?
Potentially, or, or in a singular role.
Or in a singular.
Depending on the given scenario.
Teacher A is gone for the year, they don't necessarily only sub for teacher A the whole time. It could be teacher A, B, and C are gone for part of the year, and they could.
Yep, correct.
So there's flexibility in that.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All right.
There was a motion and a second.
There was.
Call question.
Question. Who did the motion second?
I moved.
Okay, thank you. I didn't write it down. So, thank you. All right, then, we've had discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For board committee reports, everything, much of what we talked about and approved tonight on the agenda was in our operations committee that, meeting that we had. One thing that we did do that I want to note is we raised the pay for our crossing guards to $15 an hour, which I'm really glad that we did. I feel like that was long overdue. Talked about the gymnastics facilities lease update. Andy, do you want to touch on that?
Yeah, I can provide some general context. It, so we co-op with Martin County West for gymnastics and other activities too, but for that particular agreement, they are the host school. I did not see their board meeting minutes yet to know if they approved the new lease arrangement for a move to a different facility. If, if approved, we would see a significant annual lease cost savings, whereas the partner school, not the host school, we would pay our share of the facility's lease for the months during the season for which our students are participating in that activity. It would, based on the proposed rates from our previous facility, it would save us a, a significant amount would be an understatement on an annual basis. So once we can verify that it's approved by the, by Martin County West as the host district, we would then bring that to you as a board to approve a separate agreement that specifically indicates what our share will be.
Yep.
I tried to give some context, Nicole, without.
Right.
I mean, without knowing officially.
It's moving in a good direction. We talked about this at previous board meetings, and we weren't sure where we were going to go. Where it's going is a good development.
Also, the, you might have noticed on our donation list, some of those donations that we approved are things that CER attends to, and is brought to our attention that we, because we are the operators of CER, that we need to be approving those donations, just as we do all of our other donations. So some of those, you'll notice in our future board meetings, that the CER donations are also included in our general donation approval at the meetings. Otherwise, everything else we discussed was on the board meeting tonight. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I just had one more thing I was going to mention, and that is that next weekend, Fairmont is hosting the American Legion Girls State Softball Tournament, first weekend in August, at Cardinal Park. There's going to be eight teams from around the state here. And I think our efforts into improving the facilities there, what with the new concession stand and restrooms there, and all the work that we've done, really helped bring that event to our community. So I'm really looking forward to having that and, and more things like this in the future. That's very rewarding for us to see.
Yeah, and it's good for our community as well.
And, and the Fairmont girls will be participating as the host team, so.
Nice.
You can come on and cheer them on.
Great. Anything else before we?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Dan, second by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.